7:02 on call this council meeting back. Okay, the first item we're going to get into, we're going to work session. Mr. Heeckhoff, you have anything you want to say about the budget?
We are within budget. Revenues are coming in much higher than anticipated. I don't remember if the last meeting I made y'all aware, but we are on track to exceed retail sales tax by $800,000. We budgeted for 2.0 million. It looks like it's going to come in at 2.8. We're still trending well above the normal, so.
Anybody have any questions about the budget?
One thing I want to make mention to you too, and Chief Griffith is sick and not here tonight. We, he contacted me a couple of days ago and they, after going through getting the new fire truck, everything completely finished, designed, ready to go into production. We both knew when we started it that there were going to be some items that weren't covered, things that we found need to get fixed, all that. We allocated funds for that, so we, they did find those things. I signed the change order. It's a little over $7,000. And I think we budgeted, we, we were prepared for $25,000, so it's going to come in a little less than anticipated. And it's, it's in production now, so.
So when are we expecting delivery now?
About 11 months, provided they can get materials.
Yeah.
They're saying 11 months.
I have a quick question. With the fuel cost going up, how much, how much of the budget do you think we need to, if they stay where they are?
Well, if they continue to rise, we may run into some problems. At the mid-year budget amendment, we increased funding in those line items, so we should come in close to that, but it's continuing to rise, and so we've, we've taken it, we've prepared to sustain where it was. If it goes much over that, then we may have a few areas of the PD. Probably PD and public works with the two big ones that we will have a problem with because they, they've used up most miles. Maybe the fire department hopefully will slow down. There you go.
Somebody suggested that it goes back down, maybe three.
There's still some in front of those buildings. If you notice on those little black poles, they got the rings still on them. Yeah, he wanted to keep those. He tied your horse up there.
Any other questions concerning the budget? Okay, next item is discussing direction on revising current contract of waste connections. I'm just going to have to down staff work.
Yeah, he, he, he's still sore about that.
Looking at to possibly changing us over to an automated trash system where we would have the, the larger trash cans that are wheeled. And my reasoning is just for uniformity too, and also we have a lot of issues with higher winds blowing trash around. And so I got to working with Abel and Waste Connections, and they've agreed to make some adjustments for, for contract to include the larger trash bins on the wheels, but also to increase the size of our recycling bins. Right now we have a couple of small green tubs. And there's several citizens, according to Angela, that has asked about getting the larger ones because they've got five and six of those. And they just don't hold enough, so I've been working closely with Abel, and he came up with a plan. Waste Connection is willing to provide all the carts for both recycling and for the trash, which will be a considerable expense to them because it's going to require them to purchase some additional trucks as well to be able to do automation. I think it's a win-win for both the city and for them, for them, for the labor shortages, now they can operate these trucks if you're, one person is providing that too. But I can let Abel kind of talk a little bit about, if I don't have any questions. Angela has said that a lot of the citizens have been very open to the idea of the larger carts.
You're up, man.
Good evening. Congratulations, new council members, mayor. Congratulations. It's really an honor to service the city of Joshua, as Amber pretty much did my job for me tonight so well. But really what, what it boils down to is an added service, not looking to increase the rate. In fact, in discussion with the new contract, we're looking to cap the annual CPI. With things going the way they are, I think this past month, CPI was at 9%. It, it makes it uncomfortable for us as a company to come and ask for the CPI when the inflation is large as it is. So let's cap it. It's easy for us to budget. It's easy for the city to budget. Plus, we'll take on the expense and the capital expense of the carts and the truck. All we're asking for is a five-year agreement.
So would you have like a, a green tub for recycle and a blue tub for recycling?
They would be different companies.
One thing that, that I've always wondered, and I guess a couple of years ago when we were told that nobody's buying recycled. Are we still doing, are people buying recycled now?
It's still, so just to compare, to send, to send volume to a landfill, it costs us about $25 a ton. To take it to a recycling facility, it costs $90 to use it up. So nothing's changed. It's gotten a little better. We've got more buyers. Now we have buyers from Mexico and Thailand. After China started refusing all the recycling, it, it put us in a bad position, but it's gotten to.
And so what would, what would happen if we switched to this, except for a period for educated citizens or letting them know what's going on? Having Richard's presentation, you guys would just come around one day and sell these new bins under the houses and go there. What about bulk pickup?
Bulk pickup would not change. We would keep it the way it is.
Okay, which right now we don't have bulk pickup. They just pick up whatever you like last night.
Right, is that, is that, if that is something the city would like to entertain, we have no problem talking about it. I know I have conversations with Amber on how Burleson does their bulk service with the fire truck.
Right.
That is something we have. If that is something the city would like to entertain, do you do that?
And in your proposal, you were saying, you said that one day a month, bulk items by the curb, that's what they give you.
One day a month.
Correct, one day. Anybody else have any questions?
Now, in short term, in Burleson, we have this type of service. Where the one thing, though, beans are sitting, a lot of times we didn't have enough. We'd skip a week or two. I have that problem. It gets me about why.
Yeah.
But it was a good service, so. And that big grapple coming out, whenever you cream up the brush, it's pretty good.
They just don't have the time or the budget.
They also, the city of Burleson, they offer an app, which I think, because they are fully automated, I think that the citizens will really appreciate for this. Since if last notification's out, like if they had a, a delay in the pickup for that day, or for some reason we had to change the pickup date, or if they were missed, they can report missed trash, but Alex has it, your trash service, and she's going to show us.
Yeah, it's absolutely amazing. It gives you a reminder, you can sign up for reminders. It reminds you to note before 6:30 at night, put out your trash. It reminds you of every process going through, and then if you've got a question, if do you put it in trash or recycle? You can type it in, and it'll tell you exactly when to put it out and where it goes. It's an excellent program.
Would that app also do like a last reminder, hey, bulk pickup is next Monday or whatever day it's?
Yeah, you sign up on the app and, and you know, put down you want the reminder, so yeah, it'll tell you, you know, during this week is the bulk pickup. You know, of course Burleson's done by zone, so yours on, have it out by Monday. It's excellent.
We also have that when I live in Burleson, right? You just sit there and then all of a sudden that goes off, and you gotta dump it and get the trash.
Any other questions?
Do we have anything on our city ordinance that requires storage, and that trash cans have to be fenced in or?
Yes, and we're going to change it because it's ridiculous.
I mean, they're big.
But they are.
If you have to have it stored outside, that's.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're going to make, we're going to look at that ordinance, and we're probably going to have to make some adjustments to it. It needs to be updated anyway, so we'll do that. What, I guess kind of what we're looking for here is, is just a consensus for us to continue to move forward. Amber and I will hammer out the details with them, and then we'll bring it back to you for, for a contract agreement.
So one of the things that I thought of, y'all also handled the, the bi-annual trash collection that we do down behind the park where we set it up. Is it possible to have like the spring cleanup or the fall, whichever one be, be a, where people can bring bulk? Some people contact me, I know myself, I have 40 acres. I might have a store, stored up, whole bunch of stuff that I need to dispose of. It might take me two loads to get, we limit, we've limited to just one load.
Well, and that, that's internally, we, we did that internally because we had a few people that, like yourself, wasn't you? But who would hire in a bunch of help, and he would show up down here with 18-wheelers full of brush. And we just couldn't handle the capacity. They were overwhelmed, and it was, that's the reason that, that we changed, that we stopped it. We can move that back. That, that's our.
I just thought maybe, maybe re-address it. I know the cost of the dumpsters, you know, has to be.
Well, the contract gives us so many of them each year free, so it's, it's not a, it's not that big a deal to add that, to take that restriction off.
I mean, not, not to say, you know, somebody needs to bring 10 loads up there or something like that, but maybe two loads or, or once a year have it where you can. Something like that, because you definitely have that one time a year, and since we are getting into a time where we're trying to really get the city cleaned up. But one load twice a year, kind of hard to fit everything that you've got to dispose of into those, those two times a year. You know, some people don't have the opportunity to haul to us, maybe a landfill.
Well, they, our contract also gives us, they can go to the landfill twice a year.
Aside from that.
Under the, they just have to let us know so that we can let them.
But also, we were to move to using the grapple.
Would alleviate a lot of that. Sure would, yeah.
Okay, so, so getting back to discussion, that's something we need to determine, maybe make another agenda.
Sure, that's what, that's what we're, we definitely, definitely want to address it. Somebody else have any other questions?
About the timeframe on it, Abel, they have to order the truck, so this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. It's going to be.
Well, this is time for the education process and everything.
So we're, we're planning a public hearing too to invite people down here, talk about it, explain what it is, because we're going to have a few people that are going to like it.
Yeah.
If you're talking about once a week service, but I think if they can see the containers and, I mean, I don't, I got four people living in my house, and we take trash out once a month, or once a week, and it's fine.
That, that sounds like a great idea. So are we consensus that we'd like to go ahead and pursue this?
Yes.
And the only obligation from us is a five-year contract through the agreement we get.
There's no discussion on price. I mean, you're, you're losing a day of service, but we're talking about the brush and the grapple truck, so.
So you'll put something together, and we'll, we'll actually talk about it next.
Yeah, you'll approve an agreement. We'll hammer that. You'll approve next.
Is it okay for us to paint the Cowboys' cap with a flag?
It's okay with me. Norm might not like it.
Norm, is it all right?
Do they come pre-stamped?
No, they don't do that.
That's defacing.
I appreciate, you know, I'm getting old. I appreciate you saying more than you know.
We appreciate you, sir, down here all the time.
Some people didn't hope for me.
All right, well, I think, I think we're ready to go ahead and start the block with, uh, you guys will put that together next month or as soon as you can, that's great.
You got it.
All right.
It's an honor to serve the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Good seeing you, sir. Hey, you didn't brush that, somebody will bring one.
Oh, he did, when he shook my hand.
I bought him five real ones. He doesn't wear them.
I'll make you get over that. All right. Take care, Norm. Okay, we'll move to the public forum, and if I have speaker on that.
No, sir.
Okay, moving right along. Okay, next item, the city's agenda. Okay, we're going to discuss, consider, and take possible action on the meeting minutes of the April 21st speech. Is there a motion?
I might promote the second message, sir.
I'll say it. Okay, so we have a motion by Earl, and we have a second by Mike. The discussion, all those in favor? Six zero.
I'm glad I didn't have to say ah.
Next item, discuss, consider, and possibly action on the appointment of the mayor for 10 plus term of one year.
Yes, sir. According to our city charter, this should be done immediately after the election. The term is for one year. It's up to the elected officials to nominate and vote on that position.
Any nomination, mayor, please? I'd like to nominate this for my kids.
I say it, but.
There we go. All right. Any other nominations? All those in favor? Six zero.
You're okay. It doesn't pay anymore, so.
Okay. Second item is, we're open a public hearing on a request for zoning change regarding approximately 60.19 acres planned in McKinnon Williams survey. Abstract number 636, county of Johnson, Texas, located at 1280 Stadium Drive, to change from A agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district, allowed for the construction of a residential subdivision. Mr. Malton, I'll, mayor of the council, debate and property has never had, stand by a second.
It's at the end.
Turn switch.
At the bottom. I don't want it to vary, but. Mayor, if you would, state the time of the public hearing. That's okay.
Public hearing at 6:20.
Lake property has never been planted and was originally zoned as the agricultural district. The proposed development of this property is to allow for the property to be subdivided for the construction of a residential subdivision containing a minimum of 10,000 square feet lots and follow all of the R1 single-family residential district regulations. The development will be required to submit engineered construction plans and will also be required to prepare the area in final class. The city has agreed that these matters may be part of the destruction and planning review process. The proposed request complies with the future language plan. And on May, the, the P&amp;Z board had recognition for a group. Is the owner present? Would you like to make presentations? Okay.
Please just briefly speak your name and address.
I'm Clint Halsey with Halsey Engineering. My home address is 500 Thomas Lane, Lillian, Texas, 76061. So just a little status on our project. We're going for zoning. It's agricultural now, and we're going to go presidential. We plan to meet all of the city's regulations for that zoning of presidential. It is on your master thoroughfare, or remaster of city plan rather, to be residential. We're going to follow, fall in with that. We are giving up, proposing to give up driveway for the master thoroughfare plan of roads that go through our property. And we have submitted preliminary plan at this time for review, and we hope to have that reviewed very soon. And any particulars, kind of here for any questions you have, really, let us know in the presentation. That's just on the short of it there.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here speaking favor of this? Anyone who knows? Would you like to rebut that? So we're going to close the public hearing at 7:32. Item number three, we're going to discuss, consider, and possibly action on approving zoning change regarding the approximately 60.19 acres of land in McKinnon Williams survey, abstract number 636, county of Johnson, Texas, located in 1280 Stadium Drive, to change from A agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district, to allow for construction of a residential subdivision. Anybody have any? Yes, sir.
I want to add that if you want to be on for it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody have anything they want to say?
I know at, at one point, it was discussed that the, the plan was going to go to larger lots. What is the, the minimum being 10,000? Are there plans for large lots?
I know, kind of a mixture of 10,000 sort of.
Okay, so pretty much the whole thing.
As long as, the first phase is going to be 10,000 for sure, we've submitted on. As long as we can get sewer for the southerly part, if we get sewer in there economically, our plan is to go 10,000 square meters there. If for some reason we cannot bring sewer into that southern section economically, then we would go for the larger lots.
And what are the city requirements for larger lots if you're going to have to, so you're thinking about acceptance in?
Correct. Maybe need a half acre to do acceptance. A robot.
I have, I have questions, mayor. Where are you tying in sewer for the front half?
Well, the front half is going to go to Apple Court to the west, and so through the church property there, and you have a sufficient permission to obtain and use on the cross of the church property.
So have you dealt with JISA on this issue at this point?
Yes, yes, sir, we have. We have a hydraulic analysis in hand that shows, they've accepted that time for sewer for Phase 1 at Apple Street. And Phase 1 would connect on to the water at Stadium. And for Phase 2, when they've given this place to, on to west of Apple Court, there's a, I think this is a new station there. And we would have to go along the pipeline to the west, two persons property in that event, and then go into that, those stations. That was the station on all time. The other option to the sewer is to go to the east and try to gravity flow to Johnson Meadows. We've initiated discussions with them for that, and by now, I, I think it's physically possible to flow. The problems are if they have capacity in their list station, if they have. So we have to prove that they have the capacity in their list station and, and accept that, and then we'll go to the east. That's another option, the sewer for the base to and three part portion.
Were they making a recommendation?
They being Johnson County Sud, Johnson County Sud has recommended that we connect in to the west at that list station. And they, I don't think they have a preference on going to the east, but they have to, we'd have to prove that it would work. That would be on us and on the other engineer, on that other.
I would be curious as to whether that Plum Creek list station could handle that capacity. I mean, we're talking, a lot of houses being added to, and already, a pretty, pretty dense little neighborhood that already has problems with drainage.
That thing has been replaced because of Mariposa, not Mariposa, yeah, Mariposa. They redid, built a new one over there.
Okay.
So it's, I'm sure it has plenty of capacity. Yes. Yeah, a term for it.
That's like a list station.
It's a school property there.
And the hydraulic analysis that has been provided from Johnson County Sud has approved that location as our title.
I just didn't know, because it would be going pretty much through the entire division to get to that lift station.
That's. Well, we would have to solve the station of our own because we'd be downhill.
Right.
So we just.
The capacity of mine to get from that destination to the other destination to go through that neighborhood. How big of a line is it going to take? Is that going to be a, an overhaul of the Plum Creek condition?
No, no. Phase 1, that's 40 lots that would gravity flow into Apple Court. And there's an existing manhole there, and Johnson County Sud has studied that. They've given us approval. They said we're good for capacity and flow rates for those 40 lots grabbing into Apple Court. Now, everything else south, basically south of the pipelines that are there, we are going to have to do something, actually, the gravity, we'll provide to go gravity to the east. Like I mentioned, Johnson Meadows will have installed a new station of our own and travel across east, westerly to go to that, that existing lift station. Or the third option, and first word would be onsite, set it for everything south of, that would be that 40 lots.
Right, and that would be in Phase 3.
Two and three.
Two and three, yeah, okay. What's it, with Phase 2 and 3, what's the program of, lots of, we're anticipating?
Right now, we're like. 147 with.
8,000, 8,000, 10,000. Okay, 10,000, 10,000. All right, so what we're doing right now is, most definitely change agriculture to, to R1 so that they can proceed with what they need to do to turn the plan developed. Any other discussion or motion?
Loop approval. I'll say it.
Thanks, so Johnny, loop for approval. Mike seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? All those? Six zero. Thanks, sir. I remember before we discussed, consider a possible action regarding request to authorize the painting of business thing on the front of the building located in 107 North Banks, Suite A.
Yes, sir. This is the similar request that was put, I guess, beginning of the year with the breakout spread. So this will be for the Free Rivers Coffee Company. They're proposing to just paint the letter in black. And part of the order says, wall murals shall be considered on a case-by-case basis and approved by the Heritage Preservation Committee or the city council as an element of site plan application. The HP committee made their recommendation for people on May 12. Any discussions? This is for the coffee. Looking at the cases. It'll just be the black letters, black letters.
Motion here. Yeah, motion by Merle to accept, if I have a second. Also, Mr. Kidd seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six zero. Okay, item number five, discuss, discuss, consider, and possible action on improving an agreement for IT services.
We changed companies, I don't know, less than a year ago, I guess, almost a year ago. It went with, we, we'd kind of outgrown CDI. And so we, we brought in a company that specializes more in local government stuff, very familiar with police systems. Just made a lot of sense to go that route. They're, one of their specialties is security, so keeping our systems safe. They initially came in and were doing a fantastic job, and for whatever reason, customer service has basically become non-existent. We've been fighting with one computer for months to get fixed, which arguably is the most important one in the city. And it's just been one excuse after the other, and so the current contract required us to notify them 30 days prior to expiration. It expires at the end of June, and so we sent that letter and had released them effective their last day of June. We've had one company come in that was very impressive. We've talked to a couple of others, and I think we're still going to even talk to a couple more. But we are going to have to make a change because it's just ridiculous. What, I don't understand it, but it just, they need to go away. So we've, we've done that, and so we'll, we'll be bringing you back something. We'll get something hammered out and locked down, but we've still got, we'll have to bring it to you next month. But we've still got, but I have to bring it to you next month. Of course, I think we've got, it may be something that we're, we're in need just to ratify it because of timing and making sure they're in place that last day of June.
And so is this something that, that we can just kind of give the city staff authority, go ahead, initialize, get going, so we don't have that any.
Service. Anything, yeah, anything with the, uh, actual contract with Mike's time when I'm at half the city, we'd just ratify it, center on it at, at the June meeting. I, because again, this is the startup time, you need to ask before it June.
Yeah, we'd, we'd, we'd move pretty quick to make sure we don't have any downtime or lag times. But because a lot of the, you know, police systems, uh, their car, um, patrol units have computers in them, fire trucks. All that stuff is linked to the system and so we don't want any. Yeah, but we, uh.
A lot of times they wanna run parallel with each other while one kind of slowly backs out, everyone takes over, but, so usually there's about a thirty-day period where we will have two IT services as they take over the systems and get everything on, online.
They're not running too close to, why are they, are we?
Well, we were hoping to get it fixed, but they.
Are they still on contract with us?
Still, they're still in June.
So when are they gonna show up, start trying to fix some of these issues?
Well, they haven't yet, they've already been told we're canning them, so I guess they're probably not much, overhurried, but we'll keep working on them. If nothing else, we'll get access to somebody else and that.
So is this a, is this an expense where this new company's gonna come in and take over these current units?
Yeah, we won't.
They're gonna replace the.
No, all the units are owned by us, we bound, um, we're, we've started displacing, yeah, it'll, it'll be a per computer fee.
And we've gone through and, and coordinated all the, all the systems work together now, don't we? And we just do that recently, like in the last year where they all did.
Yeah, we've, we've, yeah, we've replaced a lot of.
At least more than they used to.
Yeah.
Okay, we're supposed to.
The system, the system is running well, it's a few isolated things that we just can't get them off the rear ends to fix and it, I mean, it's, it's just enough, just.
So, uh, I guess we need a motion to authorize Mike for this.
I don't think so, yeah, you, you've kind of given the go-ahead to, to start the process.
Which we've got to do something, we can't let our computers go down, so does anybody have any thing in mind?
My answer is we need to get in here to fix an email. I don't need email, give me one.
Yeah, I, I should have told you that today.
He goes, I straight, my gentleman. I don't know if you sent me something.
Okay.
Look, we're, I mean, it's whitelisting for some reason and they, they'll fix it temporarily and then it's like, it goes back.
It's been fixed at one time previously.
Yeah, it's me. It's me.
I had to do it just forty weeks ago.
Yeah, it was, because they were coming through and then all of a sudden they just stopped.
Okay, so, so Mike, go get her done.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the staff reports. Do you have any questions, my name is staff reports. I said, keep.
Be sick.
Definitely serious, just, uh.
Uh, I think he hasn't really told me what it was, I know he had a little procedure today that we'll describe as very unpleasant.
Yeah.
But I think he's not feeling well, so hopefully next day. Yeah, he, he was hoping to be here, but he, he just said he couldn't.
Well, we on track with, uh, starting the, uh, road projects, that actual.
Yeah, we're, they're actually working on setting up a reconstruction meeting at the, they're, they're working on getting that done. Contractors lined out, ready to go, and then we'll get the notice to proceed done up and signed and.
And I gave you that note earlier about Stadium Drive.
I'll send them out there tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, they're working on the bridge right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What they don't.
Yeah, I talked to Kristen the other day, the equipment is out there, the people are out there. Um, they, they just gotten started the last time I talked to him and I'm, I told him, I called him in the morning. But there, it looks like the riprap is down, they've got a lot of it done, it's just a matter of getting ready to, you gotta drill those holes and then pump in underneath them and then.
Yeah, they're, my understanding was they're on, they're on schedule, they actually are running a little ahead of schedule, but there's something that they're waiting on that won't be delivered until a, a certain day, so they're completely ready for it.
Have we had any more, uh, issues with the property owner?
No.
But we've been dealing with it.
Yeah, it's come to go to her, we reached out to, I reached out to Terry, they, they contacted the attorneys and, uh, they were supposed to call and tell them to back off, but she.
Any other questions or anything about any staff? All right, any future agenda items anybody'd like to request? Well, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.